Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We are the Owatonna School Board. This is Monday. It's the 23rd of November. It's 5:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And as we have done in the past with our virtual meetings, everything will be done with a roll call vote. I'll ask Eric to conduct the roll call vote for the attendance.
Okay, Mark.
Here.
Jelaine.
Here.
Christina.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Nikki.
Here.
And I myself is here. All present. Oh, wait, Daniella.
Don't see her yet.
I'm here. We're all present currently from the board except for the student rep.
Very good. Thank you. We'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance and with the help of Mr. Elstad, who will turn his computer so we can have the benefit of a flag. There it is. Would you all please rise? Enjoy me in the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up tonight would be to approve the agenda as it has been presented to you. We'll entertain a motion to that effect. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. Eric?
Yep, Mark.
I.
Excuse me, Mark.
Yep.
I can't hear you.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna, as soon as I turn it over to Eric, I'll mute myself. Maybe that'll help.
No, I can hear you. Plan stay through us.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Lori? She, it's her.
Lori, can you hear any of us? Eric, I'll have you hang on for just one second. It looked like she was gonna sign out and maybe she's gonna try and sign back in again. There she is. Eric, Lori, can you hear us now? She can't.
Jeff, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yep. Can you hear me, Lori? It's all on her end. She might not have her speaker turned up.
Okay, Lori, try it one more time. Can you hear us?
Yes, I did.
She doesn't, Lori, you don't appear to be muted, but we still can't, we still can't hear you.
Try that.
Now we can hear you. Now we can't.
Now you can't?
Now, now you're coming through. Okay, we'll continue on. Eric, we'll continue on with the, to approve the motion of the approval of the agenda.
Okay, Mark.
I.
Lori.
Hi.
Jelaine.
Hi, sorry.
Christina.
Hi.
Tim.
Hi.
Nikki.
Hi.
And I myself is an I. Seven will pass.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item four tonight on the agenda is the mission moment. I'll turn things over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm going to be sharing my screen here momentarily. And within that, I am going to share with you a slide that represents our mission moment for the month of November. And I believe everyone should be able to see this slide up right now. Our mission moment for November is dwelling in the area of our safe and caring community. And this month, we are calling out Nikki Melgarde, who's an art instructor at Owatonna Middle School, and her Husky Connections class. This is actually, came to us from last year. But last year, her Husky Connections decided to raise funds for Team Trees, which is a nonprofit that is part of the Arbor Day Foundation. Her Husky Connections class made acrylic pore magnets and sold them at lunches. The money raised was donated to Team Trees, and they were able to purchase 400 trees to be planted as a result. This fall, Team Trees chose Nikki and her kids' project to be a feature story in their K-12 newsletter. A quote from Nikki Melgarde, "Each year, I try to create at least one community action project with my students to try and teach civic responsibility and to make the world a better place. Last year, I ran across your Team Trees project and felt it was a perfect fit for my kids. Her students created eye-catching acrylic pore magnets and sold them for $2 each, with each magnet planting a tree for Team Trees. In the end, as I mentioned, they were able to plant 400 trees. Thank you to Nikki Melgarde, and thank you to our students at Owatonna Middle School and her Hussey's Connection for making a difference and for planting trees that provide valuable oxygen for us as we move forward. And what just, what a great way for them to demonstrate that they are caring about their environmental community as we move forward. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Elstad, and thank you to Ms. Melgarde for that. That's a, that's a great story. We will move on. Item five tonight is public forum. I'm gonna look to my right. I'm gonna look for Sarah to indicate if we had anything submitted. Nothing submitted for public forum tonight, so we're gonna continue to move on. We have a couple of reports tonight. First item would be the audit, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Elstad to do some introductions of our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is our annual audit that's coming tonight. And we have some great news to share in regard to our audit, and I'm not gonna steal any thunder at this point. I would like to turn it over to our Director of Finance and Operations, Amanda Hellman. Amanda.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. Tonight, we have Dennis Hugovin from Kristen Larson Allen, who is from our independent audit firm. He is going to present our executive audit summary to you tonight, so I am going to share my screen here and then let him take it.
Thank you, Amanda. There we go.
There we go.
Amanda has graciously accepted the offer to be my driver of the PowerPoint tonight. We met a week ago with the finance committee and kind of fine-tuned the PowerPoint a little bit, so we appreciate their input. We went over it all in a longer format than what we're gonna be able to do, spend on it tonight, but we do appreciate the time that we were able to spend a week ago. We also want to thank the finance team and all the hard work that they put into the audit process. Sarah Crambley is lead contact with the audit, and certainly Amanda gets involved as well, but we could not do our audit work without their excellent work. And all the, you'd be amazed at all the different people that get involved in the audit process, but they really have developed a great working relationship with the audit team and really appreciate all their excellent work and their excellent effort. So the PowerPoint tonight is really just extraction of different elements of the executive audit summary. And I don't know if that's yet been posted on the district's website or not, but it's intended as a compliment to the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The district has put together a CAFR Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, as they say, for a number of years. And it really is holding itself to be, holding itself out to a higher standard than it's certainly required to. It's submitted to the ASBO Certificate of Excellence program every year to, again, tell the community that you're holding yourself out to a higher standard than you otherwise would have to. It's, it's just jam-packed full of excellent historical financial data and things like that, that, that bond rating agencies are interested in and different elements that, in terms of helps, in terms of the competitive rates on bonds and things like that. Obviously, with all the different things you've been doing with building construction and whatnot, it really does make a difference in terms of being competitive and getting excellent rates and things like that. So it does make a huge difference. And it's one of the more comprehensive CAFRs that you'd ever find if you compared one district to the next. So it's really a feather in the cap of the district in terms of the amount of effort that goes into that. So anyway, here, here's the single page that kind of summarizes all the different things that you're hiring an auditing firm to do for the district in terms of all the different ways that we're required to give opinions and potential findings and things like that. So we'll kind of cover these kind of quickly, but the main thing that you're hiring an auditing firm to do is to give an audit opinion on the financial statements themselves. And here, as it says, we've issued what's known as a clean or an unmodified audit report. It's, it's good of an audit opinion as we're able to give any Minnesota school district. And then because we're following governmental auditing standards, we have to issue what's called the Yellow Book Compliance Opinion. And for 2020, we had no compliance issues to report under the compliance opinion aspect of that particular opinion. And then there's an internal control aspect of that opinion. But we had no material weaknesses in internal controls to report under the internal control aspect of that letter. And then because you expended more than $750,000 of federal funding, you had what's called the single audit. And this year, we audited the Title I program and the child nutrition cluster. And for this particular year, there were no findings to report. Last year, we had three significant deficiencies to report. I think two of those related to the child nutrition cluster last year, and one to significant deficiency related to special ed. But this year, to have no findings was a very significant outcome this year. And so the business office was very, very, very pleased with that outcome because those results do not just happen. They take it very seriously. And it was very exciting for them to have that outcome. So the board wanted us to make a point to emphasize that there were no findings this year for the single audit because that was hard fought on their part to make sure that that outcome was achieved. So that's very important to them. And then we also do a Minnesota legal compliance audit where we use the guidance put together by the Office of the State Auditor to test the compliance of the district with a number of different state statutes. It's actually quite common to have some sort of legal compliance exception. You can imagine when we're testing the district's compliance with prompt payment of bills, for example, that's the most common legal compliance exception. You can imagine how many bills can accidentally get misplaced on an administrator's desk somewhere. So it's not that uncommon to have a legal compliance exception, but we had nothing to report for 2020. So you can imagine how exciting to get a full-page summary of all the different ways you could have a finding and to get an absolutely clean sweep like this. I can't promise that that'll happen every year, but this was one of those years when it's an absolute clean sweep. Boring for me, but very exciting for the district. It was a very, very clean, clean sweep in terms of audit opinions and findings this year. Nothing to report. In terms of the financial outcomes for the year, also a very good year, even though the graphs look a little bit odd, you know, perhaps to the untrained eye. What I see, though, are outcomes that were very much in keeping with what the intent of the school board was, which is what you'd want. So over the five-year trends of the fund balance of the general fund, you can see that the unassigned fund balance was virtually unchanged from 2019 to 2020. 2020 ending fund balance unassigned category, which is, you know, programmatically what the board has available to it to decide, you know, what to do programmatically with the unassigned portion of fund balance. So for it to be unchanged is, you know, pretty much consistent with what they had expected or to have about five weeks of average expenditures available to it. So the ending fund balance in total was about 15.91%. The ending unassigned fund balance was about 9.46%, which is very, very similar to the ending prior year fund balance of 9.69%. The, the drop from 2018 to 2019 was very much in keeping with what the board's intent was. They made a decision to have a district policy where the minimum fund balance was to be between 8% and 10% of general fund expenditures, the general fund expenditure budget. So that was very much an intentional thing on the board's part, and they've been very consistent about keeping it in that range. In terms of the enrollment over the past five years, you can see from this graph, enrollment dropped slightly from 2019 to 2020 and net loss of about 55.6 ADMs. The total resident ADMs increased by about 10, but the net loss was about 55.6. One of the things we talked about last week was, where for some districts, that was much more significant in terms of the post-COVID response, you know, in terms of the distance learning and where, what happened with enrollment and things like that. So that was not as significant as what some other districts had as far as their response to the distance learning. So in terms of the next slide, the general fund revenue sources over the past five years, there's a really good explanation of this. I wanted to get a plug-in for the MDNA from the front of the CAFR section for people to read that. On page 27, the district business office writes a really good summary in the management's discussion and analysis section of why the revenues increased from 2019 to 2020. This is also the second year of the legislature not having any impact of tax shifts or aid shifts and things like that. So I, if I had been a betting man last year, I would have said that highly unlikely that the legislature would have to balance the state's budget by coming up with mechanisms such as a tax shift or aid shifts and things like that. But now, in a post-COVID-19 environment, I'm not so sure about that, you know, because of the state's budget and having to pledge a, plug a significant budget deficit, they may have to use mechanisms like that. So I don't know that that'll be true going into the 2021 budget or legislative session. I don't know what they're gonna have to do. But this was the second five-year period when this was an unadulterated summary of revenue sources that didn't have those kind of mechanisms. So it'll be interesting to see what they, how they plug that budget hole. In terms of expenditures per ADM, we did have a little bit of a discussion last week. Going from looking at 2019 to 2020, the, the district really, you know, it's, it's not a natural progression from 2019 to 20. It really does reflect the fact that the district has really managed the, the natural progression of costs by showing cost containment here. You can see, doesn't have the, the natural progression that you would normally see there with, with, you know, just normal inflationary increases that would normally take it off to the right a little bit more like that. This is just showing a real cost containment measures being implemented here to keep costs in line with change in enrollment and things like that. So it's just kind of jumps out to you when you look at the expenditures expressed this way as a cost per student basis. And this is another way of looking at breaking down the total expenditures by object dimension. You can see that the, the costs that were incurred, the additional costs from one year to the next, were salaries and benefits. It really kind of jumps out at you here, and, and you'd expect that. So if you're gonna have, spend additional dollars from one year to the next, it's pretty much built into the, the contracts and things like that, which is probably to be expected. In terms of the Food Service Fund, and we talked about this last week, but, you know, once we got to the, the distance learning that had to be implemented around the middle of March, there were no additional à la carte sales, of course, and then the, the free meals. So that really brought down the, the revenue, had a significant impact on revenues. And, and of course, one of the things we really talked about is, and it was more anecdotal because I get to see a lot of different school districts, and one of the things we commented on was the fact that what really separated one district from, and from, from the next in terms of the bottom line impact on fund balance was the districts that really had strong programs that reacted relatively quickly to the instance of the distance learning and the, the impact of COVID-19, where the ones that reacted very quickly had relatively minor impacts on those, the COVID-19. The instance of the drop in the revenue and the, the cost impacts, and, and Oatonna falls into that category. They had a relatively strong and quick response to that, so the impact on the earning fund balance was not as severe as what we were seeing in, in some other school districts. And you only saw that in districts that had strong reactions to that, quick, quick reactions to that. So the, the impact was not as severe as it might have otherwise been. In terms of the meal served, you could really see the, the significant drop in, in meals. But the relative impact in terms of the types of meals really wasn't, I guess it's not that surprising that the, the types of meals wasn't that significantly impacted, but, because it was relatively short period of time. But I'll be more interested if it's, if it's a longer period of time in fiscal 2021, I should say. In terms of the Community Service Fund, again, I think the other thing that surprises that was, was, and shouldn't have been as surprising as it turned out to be, but the, the school districts that had strong community service programming and had this types of services that people need to, to become really reliant on in terms of this school age care programming and things like that, really successfully rose to the challenge and, and really came out of it on the other end much stronger than what we anticipated. We thought there'd be much more severe impacts to the community service programs. But what we found were the districts that really had strong programs going into the, the COVID-19 situations came out on the other end because they already had strong programming that people needed to rely on. And that really showed in an Owatonna, as you can see here, that they really came out on the other end by having the type of programming that really people came to depend on. And it really showed in, in terms of the actual ending results. In terms of expenditures per ADM comparison, we started, I think, showing this, really started showing it last year. And one of the reasons that we started showing this more visually, we've always been showing profiles data, and particularly for Owatonna. There, I had to shut something down that was blocking my screen. One of the reasons we started showing this more visually is just because otherwise it got to be showing a lot of numbers. But one of the reasons we started showing it in this format is because for schools such as Owatonna that had less resources available, we needed a way to show it more visually so that you could show that for a school district that has less resources available, we needed a way to show visually that for those that had one, you know, dot less dollars available, we needed to show visually that you were investing it in, in places where it's more closely aligned with regular instruction. For example, more, more directly aligned with the classroom than in administration, frankly, you know, as an example. So you're expending less in, in district and school administration and more into the classroom. Even though you have less available to spend, you're putting more directly into the classroom. So that, that was the intent of, of showing that more visually. So even though it gets a little bit more, for my type of brain, it might be a little bit more difficult or challenging to interpret. That was the intent behind it. So that was a quick run-through, the highlight of the executive audit summary. But we do sincerely appreciate the opportunity to serve the district, and to the extent people do have questions, Amanda or Sarah certainly know how to reach me and can, I'd be happy to answer any questions or take along, take any feedback along as far as how we can improve information and take that under advisement. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions if there is any for me.
Yes, there, thank you very much. Let's open it up. Board members, any questions for Amanda? Dennis, anybody? I do not see any. Amanda, how many times in the history that you have been here have you had an audit come back that clean?
This is the first year that we've had a clean sweep with no findings, so this is excellent news and just super proud of our team, so.
Congratulations on behalf of the board. We just, we couldn't be more proud. That's a, that's the real milestone. Thank you. I'll look around one more time to see if there are any questions, comments. Hearing none again. Thank you. Thank you both very much. I'm gonna turn things back over to the, Mr. Elstad, one more time. I'm gonna turn, come right back to you, Amanda. Item B will be the Fall Enrollment Update.
Are you guys there? I must have lost my sound.
We are. That would have been the error, became between the chair and the keyboard there. So I had forgot to unmute myself. I apologize. Thank you to Dennis for providing his partnership for the, the audit. And I'm really proud of our team in the Finance and Business Office to, that's, that's quite a feat. So I will turn things back over to Amanda, though, to present the Fall Enrollment Report.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen again here. Does everyone see in their enrollment report? Okay, good. All right, so tonight we wanted to walk through our enrollment report and show you kind of where we're at as of October 1. So I'm gonna go through where our current enrollment is and class sizes for each grade level, look at a little bit of where we're at for open enrollment, and then look forward to the next five years as far as what we're, what we're seeing for anticipated targets for the next five years. So as you can see here, our elementary K-5 enrollment is of October 1. I'm pleased to say that we still continue to have no hotspots K-5 as we're taking a look at our class sizes and our populations per school. And with the pandemic added in here, we had another layer of, you know, looking at those balanced class sizes as we tried to plan for the fall, because as we had students doing distance learning and we had students that were in person in our elementary, we had to really make sure that we were balancing our class sizes to make sure that if we had to move to the hybrid model at any point in time during the fall, that we were able to have balanced class sizes that met capacity levels for that hybrid model. So not only were we looking this fall to make sure we were meeting those capacity levels for hybrid model, but we're looking at it from a holistic perspective as a school district as well, to make sure we're maintaining those average class sizes like we want to, so that when we're able to bring all kids back in person, we have those balanced class sizes and balanced populations at all of our sites. So we continue to see that happening, continue to be using our neighborhood boundaries as we have been, and we continue to see those results happening where we have those balanced class sizes as we move forward. Here, we can just see our elementary capacity levels, as I said, spread out very consistently throughout the district. Really no changes from year to year. As you can see, the percentage of the bottom percentage of district, McKinley being our largest site obviously has a little bit more of the percentage of the district, but really balanced overall throughout the district. As we take a look at our total students and the populations of students that we have at each of our sites, you can see as a K-5 level, the percentage of students. So overall, 19.1% of our students K-5 are receiving special education services. Around 10.7% of our students are receiving EL, our English learner services. And then around 42.1% of our K-5 students qualify for free and reduced lunches. And as you can see, when you're taking a look at each of those sites, Wilson and McKinley are our highest population of students for free and reduced at each of those sites as we're taking a look at the demographics per site. As far as the middle school goes, and we take a look at all of our departments, all the enrollments, all of the sections that we have, we can see that our average class size for the middle school is falling around our target of between 28 and 30. We're at 29 and a half average class size. If we take out music, we're at 29.2 per class, our, our average class size. So we're right in target with where we want to be with the middle school as well. When we take a look at the same thing with the high school, we can see that our enrollment is here with our sections. And as you can see, we are a little bit below, actually, where we target for the 28 to 30. We're at around 23.7 average class size for the high school without music, we're around 23 there. And as we take a look at open enrollment this year, as you can see, the last few years, we've been between 40 and 50 open enrollment going out of the district as a net loss. And we did gain a little bit back this year. As you can see, in 2021, right now, we're sitting at a negative 20. However, when we take a look to see what's going on with the non-public realm, we can see that everything remained very consistent from year to year with the Um, from year to year with the exception of the homeschool. So as we went into this distance learning, we went into the fall with hybrid learning. Um, with, you know, our all-in-person model that we that we started with the safe learning plan. You can see that some families decided to. Actually move to homeschooling versus doing the distance learning um, model within our school district. So we did see a big jump there. However, as we take a look as to where we are projecting, um, when we started this fall, we're really only behind about we're fifty students lower than what we had anticipated when we projected for our preliminary budget. Um, which is significantly better than some of our big nine colleagues um, in the in the big nine as they're seeing, some of them are seeing between a hundred and fifty to three hundred students lower than they were anticipating. So. With fifty students being lower, even though that sounds like a large number, we are, you know, maintaining and we're still about to be projecting that and. We do anticipate that a majority of these students that left um, because of the distance learning model, because of the pandemic happening, will be coming back in. So as we take a look at what we project forward for the next five years, we're including those students, um, projecting that those students come back in. Um, so as you can see here, our average daily membership as we progress out for the next five years, we'll can see we're we're gonna remain. Pretty relatively flat with some, a little bit of declining enrollment and I'll and I'll elaborate on that here in a second as to why we see a slight decline as we move out to the next five years. Um, as you can see, we do have some larger class sizes that are moving through the high school right now. So the. The black bars on this graph are really just showing um, what our senior classes are that are gonna be graduating for each of the next five years. And then we know birth rates have been declining um, in in our in our county. So we know that we're gonna see smaller kindergarten class sizes. And so as those, as those large senior classes graduate, we see smaller kindergarten classes coming in. And so that's where we're seeing that slight decline in enrollment as we project out through the next five years. And this is just a graph showing um, each different grade level as to what we're anticipating um, for the end of the year, average daily membership for each grade level for this school year. And as I mentioned earlier, those kindergarten enrollments that we're talking about, when we're projecting what we are actually gonna have coming through our doors, we're using this seventy point four percent migration rate. Which essentially means we're assuming that seventy point four percent of the of a. Child that are they're birthing at our at our hospital here are going to come through our doors when they're five and it. Enter kindergarten classroom. So right now that's the percentage that we're using. And here are the numbers that we can expect um, for the next five years as we progress through that. So. Really overall, I'm I, you know, even though we've seen it a drop or a rise in those um, homeschool students where we're really only, you know, fifty students lower than what we were anticipated. So. All in all, um, pretty close to what our enrollment projections were, even with the pandemic. Um, rolling forward on us and really not knowing um, how that was going to impact us. So with that, um, I think I'll turn it over for any questions that anyone has.
Amanda, could you do me a favor? Can you go back two slides? Can you put your presentation back up there? And can you go back two slides where it gave us some class by class sense of of what your student population was by class? There you go, right there. That's a good spot to land on. Thank you.
Yep.
And let's open it up. Uh, board members, questions for Amanda on um, this report? Thanks, Amanda. If you can.
Yep.
There we go.
Um, Amanda, maybe you can just um. Expand just a little bit. So I was thinking to that slide that you showed with kind of the net migration out of our district, the number of students we've lost, but. Um, as I looked at that just quickly as you were moving through. So last year we had ninety four that went to homeschool, it looked like, and this year we have a hundred and seventy three. So if we just. Quickly do the math. So we had, what, eighty kids? Um, but we only had a net loss of fifty, which tells me.
So on the, on the open enrollment piece, that's the trade-off. So open enrollment, we're using running around a negative fifty. Right now we're running around a negative twenty. So when we offset those two um, components, that's where we're getting to that fifty that we were off from a projection standpoint.
Okay. Okay. Anyway, didn't look as nearly as bad as I thought or feared it might.
Yes.
And then one more quick question, as long as I kind of have the floor. Can you comment on the migration rate that seventy point four? I think we've used that consistently, haven't we? And can you just refresh my memory? Kind of where does that come from or how do you know what number to use?
Yeah, so the seventy point four percent we're using comes from the demographic study we did in two thousand eighteen with Hazel Reinhardt. Um, but we also track internally in our office, all the births that are happening at the hospital each year and just double check that with the percentage we're using to make sure that it's close. And every year it's been very close to what Hazel had projected for us. So that's why we continue to use her model. Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
So, um. You showed that the free and reduced lunch percentage.
Yep.
Um, have you seen um, that decrease because families are not completing the forms now that they're virtual?
Excellent question. Um, yes, actually, we have been doing a lot of outreach. Um, this here again is we're not as bad as some of our big nine. Counterparts as far as what has been left out there. Right now we're sitting with about a hundred and fifty students that. Qualified for free and reduce benefits last year that have not reapplied. And so we've been doing a lot of outreach to families to try to get them to understand that this isn't just about. You know, free meals. It's about um, funding that comes to the schools. Um, to help support social workers, to help support those extra needed, you know, reading, math um, interventions that we're doing within our school. So it's very important. Um, for families to know that it's not just about free meals. There is a funding component attached with it. Um, so I am working with our nutrition services department. We're gonna put a little flyer together and so we have really essentially until. January seventh, I think is our last Mars submission for um, the for our counts that would count for free and reduce. So we're really gonna make a big push. And we've been making a big push this fall to get families to reapply. Uh, but it is going to be an issue and it is going to be something we're gonna need to um, approach our legislators about because every school is in the same boat that we're in right now where we're seeing significant decreases. Um, and we we really wanna hold harmless there so that we're not being impacted because of the pandemic and things that are happening within people's lives right now.
If I might interject here, um, as Amanda alluded to, uh, we've been in contact with our legislators to walk them through a couple of different aspects that are. Uh, part of part of the impact of our enrollment report and and what we are seeing. Um, one of the things that we have requested of our legislature is to um, look at the previous year's enrollment and actually two years prior. To average out our enrollment, knowing that we are at one district and many, many districts have lost. Enrollment to homeschool or other online academies and things like that. Um, which has a significant, significant impact on our overall financial picture. Uh, likewise, we have asked our local legislators to consider um, some sort of uh, a way to to help us with the. Title one funding that we received because of free and reduced lunch numbers being lower than expected. And so again, those are the movements afoot. Uh, we're hopeful that the legislature will take up some of those issues sooner than later in the session. Uh, so that we can recover some of those uh, costs and so on, uh, moving forward.
Yeah, and what that equates to that hundred and fifty students essentially, Nikki, equates to about four hundred thousand dollars of loss in revenue for us, which is 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 really significant. So, yep.
Uh, board members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Amanda, thank you very much. Great report. Mr. Elstad, any last comments, thoughts on that? Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, item. Uh, seven tonight on our agenda, the general information um, is the enrollment report. Ford is one last opportunity to look around, see if anybody has any questions. It's again seeing none. We we're gonna continue to move on. Um, item eight tonight, which is uh, items that need no uh, action by the board. It's uh, simply. Discussion items only. As you appear on my screen, I'm gonna go around. Christina, you appear first. Anything for board forum?
Nope, nothing today.
Thank you. Tim, how about you?
Nothing for me.
Eric, you have anything?
Nothing this time. Okay. Lori, how about you?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Nikki?
Um, yes, actually, um, I just wanna share with the rest of the board um, that. I was fortunate enough to attend a pre-delegate assembly meeting and. Um, have seen many of the um, legislature um, proposals that are. I'm going to go um, in front of the delegate assembly um, to hopefully move forward. And um, the free and reduced lunch um, and enrollment um, were two topics that were um, discussed at length. So. Again, it's it's good to hear another perspective. I thank you, Amanda, for sharing that. So um, again, it kind of, for me, kind of put all the pieces together.
Great. Thank you. Thanks. Uh, Jolene, anything for you for board forum?
Not to me.
Okay, yeah, and the only thing that I would have for all of you is just. It, you know, by all appearances, we're gonna meet virtually again here in the month of December and we're gonna cross our fingers behind our backs that. Come January, we're back into a an in-person format once again. I'm gonna turn to Mr. Elstad and open it up for anything that he might have to add with regard to the administrative report.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I wanna, I usually at our meetings like this, give a COVID update and it seems like we talk about this at most of our meetings, but it's it's the um. The topic du jour uh, most every day. Um, I wanted to uh, lift up to you tonight that our county case numbers have continued to rise. Um, at last Thursday's report, uh, we had eighteen, it was reported we had eighty nine point nine cases per ten thousand residents. Which uh, for sure fits the puts us into distance learning with all of our students. I I will report to you that this Thursday or Friday, I'm not certain exactly when they'll come out because of the holiday on Thursday. Uh, we will in fact at Steel County have one hundred and forty six point one cases per ten thousand. So we are definitely seeing the doubling and and almost tripling effect uh, from where we were just two weeks ago. And so COVID is is certainly here and uh, we are seeing that um, not only um, in the numbers in the county, but also how it impacts our staff and the available. Available staff to teach. I would add to you that um, because of those numbers last week, I was able to do a regional consult. With our representative from the Minnesota Department of Health. And uh, inquired about our current plan and whether or not we needed to uh, sort of uh, revise our plan moving forward. The advice that I receive from that representative is that um, the return of our students on December seventh. Is not likely, in fact, is not likely at all. And so um, with that, I would like to just make sure I brief the board tonight that tomorrow morning. I will be sending out a communication to our parents uh, that will uh, extend our distance learning period through Friday, January eighth. And uh, this is due to the fact that as we look at the numbers, where's a two-week delay? And so as we start to look at the numbers, it actually brings us through that number fifty through at least mid-December. And so uh, with the holiday uh, weeks thrown in there, um, we made the decision as a district to extend that distance learning. Which in fact is um, parallel to a number of districts around the state that have done the same thing. It would be our hope that we would be able to come back uh, to the model we just left with our students. So. Uh, early childhood through fifth grade would be in a hybrid in-person model. And certainly our secondary would be in a hybrid model, starting on Monday, January eleventh. And uh, if that may need to be extended, but at this point, uh, that was the advice from the Minnesota Department of Health. Uh, that again, we extend our distance learning period up through Friday, uh, January eighth. Uh, logistically, what that means is that Thursday, January seventh, then would be the last day of instruction. Uh, during this distance learning and Friday, then January eighth would be a transition day so that we could resume uh, our learning models on the eleventh. As I mentioned, all of that is subject to change. Um, we know at this point that COVID is in charge. And so uh, we will see how the community mitigates that risk. And uh, hopefully with the measures that have been put in place, we will drop those numbers and get our students back in person. Which I have mentioned, you know, or several hundred times is when we do our best work, is when our students are with us. It is our hope. In fact, uh, next Monday, I will be joining a new subcommittee uh, that was put together by Commissioner Ricker. Uh, called this uh, back to school safely plan, uh, which is actually looking at long-term. When we may be able to return all of our students in person every day. And so the light at the end of the tunnel, as uh, Commissioner Ricker and Lieutenant Governor Flanagan indicated to me. The light of the light at the end of the tunnel is getting brighter. Uh, we just hope to add a few lumens to that so that we can make it even brighter to get our kids back in person uh, sooner than later. So again. Uh, just in short, there'll be a parent communication going out tomorrow morning at eight A M. Uh, letting our parents know the plan moving forward with our extended distance learning period. I have alerted all of our largest employers in the community. As well as our Chamber of Commerce so that they were able to talk with their human resources. Individuals in those companies to make sure that they were prepared, knowing that this puts an extra burden on parents uh, for this time of distance learning. So at this point, I would entertain any questions that board members might have in regard to that item.
Um, I have a question. So does this um. Has winter sports been addressed in this?
Yes, thank you, Nikki. Thanks. I I had a note to talk about it. I just forgot. So thank you for reminding me. Uh, in accordance with Governor Wall's latest uh, executive order regarding uh, the four-week shutdown of all winter adult and youth activities. Um, we are keeping with that and so December eighteenth is the end of that order. Uh, we are hopeful that the Minnesota State High School League will weigh in and uh, try to provide some additional guidance for us. It does not mean that we will resume uh, activities um, the nineteenth of December. Uh, what it means is that we're on hold until that point and then we'll make the. Extra decisions or other decisions, excuse me, um, in regard to that, uh, once we get more feedback and data. From both uh, the governor's office as well as the Minnesota State High School League. One thing I would add is that uh, we have been asking that um, we adjust our seasons accordingly so that we don't have to shorten any seasons. Um, what that means is would be adjusting our winter season to go later than they've typically gone. So sometime in late March or early April. And then commence our spring sports, which might go a little further into June than we typically have. But it would allow those student athletes and other activities to perform and uh, do things in a timely manner while not being impacted and having such shortened seasons. So thank you. Other questions? That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Elstad, thank you. Uh, I'm just looking around to see if anybody has any other questions relative to this or anything else that appeared in the administrative report. See any mute buttons being unmuted. So we're gonna continue to move on. Item nine tonight would be the consent agenda. The quick reminder, we are approving minutes from October twenty sixth. And November nine and November thirteen, the dispersment and personnel reports. Anybody have any reason to believe that we need to pull anything out from the consent agenda? Looking around, I don't see that. Just as we have done in the past with this virtual format, in order of just for expediency with the meetings, I will introduce the agenda or the motions tonight. I'll I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Eric, would you commence with the roll call, please?
Certainly. Mark?
I.
Laurie?
I.
Jolene?
I.
Christina?
I.
Tim?
I.
Nikki?
I.
And I myself, so I, seven all pass.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, that motion carries. Uh, we're gonna move on. Item ten tonight, uh, board action being required. Uh, first item here would be the Minnesota State High School League grant. I'm gonna turn things back over to Mr. Elstad.
Thank you, Mr. Members of the board. Tonight you're seeing um, the Minnesota State High School Grant, Form A Grant. This is something that we have been doing for the last number of years. Uh, this is a grant that comes from the State High School League Foundation. And uh, the money that we have received uh, goes specifically to offset any student activity costs uh, for families that might apply for them. Uh, in the past, we have also used uh, these grants uh, to do our Superfan Conference, which uh, brings together student leaders from across the uh, conference. Uh, to uh, help them with sportsmanship and just the way uh, we should be cheering at games and things like that. So again. Uh, this is something that you have approved in the past, but this is uh, coming up for your approval or consideration of approval tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Elstad on this? Okay, hearing none. I will move that the board approve the resolution supporting the district's. Application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A Grant to offset student activity fees. I'll turn things over to. Oh, wait, I'll wait for a second.
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 Do you have the second? Now, Eric, if you would please, the uh, vocal.
Yep. Mark?
I.
Laurie?
I.
Jolene?
Aye.
Christina?
Hi.
Tim?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
And I myself, so I, seven will pass.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B would be regarding the audit that we just heard about for the year ended June 30, 2020. Mr. Elstad, one last opportunity to weigh in or make comment on this.
I, you know, I didn't get a chance to before because of course the mute button was on. But I wanted Amanda and her staff to know. I'm so proud of the work that they've done. We were in a time where we've made budget reductions and cuts. And of course, you know, that's reflected in the audit. But again, to have a clean sweep that really just represents the acumen, financial acumen that we have on our staff, I think is just exemplary. So I want to just make sure that Amanda and her staff knows. I'm very proud of the work they've done in this district and community. Should be proud of the way that we have been great stewards of their dollars. So thank you, Amanda. And at that, I would turn it over to Amanda. If there are any questions in regard to your consideration of approval of the June 30, 2020 audit.
I'm looking around. I do not see any questions. Amanda, I'm going to echo Mr. Elstad's comments. Boy, on behalf of the community, thank you. That's fabulous stewardship of the community fund. So thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I will then make the motion. I move that the board approve the audit for year ended June 30, 2020 as presented.
Second.
We do have a second. Turn things over to Eric.
Mark?
Aye.
Laurie?
Aye.
Jolene?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
And I myself, so I, seven will pass.
That motion carries. Thank you. Item C tonight would be a resolution establishing the polling places. I'll turn things back over to Mr. Elstad.
Again, this has become sort of an annual consideration of the board. And so as we look forward to the next year, we have to establish our polling places. And again, for an election such as the year coming up, it is recommended to you that we would consider all of the city polling places. And then again, one combined polling place at Clinton Falls Township as we have done in prior years.
Board members, any questions with regard to this? Okay. Hearing none. Move that the board approve the resolution establishing polling places and designating hours for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Eric, if you would, please.
Certainly. Mark?
Aye.
Laurie?
Aye.
Jolene?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
And I myself, so I, seven will pass.
That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of a level three grievance on a personnel matter. An employee of the school district requested a level three hearing on an issue involving the assignment of the employee. Pursuant to the terms of an applicable employment agreement, the hearing on the grievance was deferred to a committee of the school board. I understand that the hearing before the committee was held and that the committee is now bringing before the school board its findings and recommendation. At this time, I will turn things over to Laurie, the chair of the committee, to address the school board as to the committee's findings and recommendations for consideration.
Thank you. Fellow board members, so information has been provided to you that outlines the subject of the grievance as well as the proceedings that have occurred. As these documents note, this is a grievance brought by an educational assistant relative to her assignment for the 2020, 2021 school year. And the dispute is whether the employee should be provided with duties that would allow her to perform her job remotely at home. The grievance had proceeded through levels one and two. The committee then met on November 4th to hear the level three grievance. At that time, the grievance was present via a remote access or a remote proceeding. And she was provided an opportunity to present her position as to why the grievance should be granted. Superintendent Elstad submitted to us a written statement as to why he denied the grievance at the level two hearing. The committee considered both sides as well as all the documents and proceedings to date, all of which were included for you in your packet. There were no new issues or information raised by the grievance at the level three hearing on November 4th. After hearing the submissions, reviewing the information submitted, the committee determined that the points raised by the grievance do not justify granting the grievance and that the decision of the superintendent at the level two hearing was correct in all respects. The committee therefore recommends denial of the grievance. On behalf of the committee, I'm providing to you a recommended decision for consideration and adoption by the school board to send to the grievant that incorporates the reasons for our recommendations to deny. If the school board wishes to adopt this response, a resolution has been drafted for this purpose.
Board members, you have now heard the recommendation of the committee. Going to turn to Tim and ask for Tim to present the motion.
I move that the board approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Turning things over to Eric for the roll call vote.
Mark?
Aye.
Laurie?
Aye.
Jolene?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
And I myself, so seven, or I, so seven will pass.
That motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item E, gifts to the district. Last time tonight, I will turn things back over to Mr. Elstad.
Thank you, members of the board. Tonight, we have a few gifts that have come into us. One of them I wanted to just call your attention to, we received a large gift from the McKinley PTO, which was in addition to other gifts that have been provided for the outdoor classroom that is now at McKinley Elementary. And it is my hope that as the weather warms, that we will have one of our meetings this spring at McKinley Elementary so that all of you can see the new outdoor classroom and the things that have been added there. Certainly that as we start to reflect some of the steam sort of teaching and and stem now with the arts steam, that it certainly provides another very unique experience for our students. And if you recall about a little over a year ago, we all traveled to the to the middle school where Dr. Maher presented the Outdoor Learning Center at the Oatana Middle School. And certainly with the advent of our new high school, we will be adding to those outdoor learning spaces again, so that all of our students have those unique experiences. So again, my thank you to the McKinley PTO for that generous donation. And certainly some other donations, I want to thank Mankey Implement Equipment for giving us lawnmowers that were given to them that don't work for our small engines classes. What a great thing for our students to have and and just a great business partnership. And of course, then we received another $500 gift for our adaptive floor hockey team. So again, very giving community. And not all those gifts have to come in the form of money. Sometimes it's just in services or opportunities for our students. So that is my report on the gifts to the district tonight.
Mr. Elstad, thank you. Board members, any questions? Comments with regard to gifts? Okay, hearing none. I move that the board approve the resolution for acceptance of gifts as presented. One last time, Eric.
I second it. And Mark?
Thank you for making the second. Yeah, I for me.
Laurie?
Aye.
Jolene?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
I did catch you, right, Jolene? Okay, and I myself, so I, so seven will pass.
That motion carries. Thank you, folks. With that, I will make the motion that we adjourn our meeting tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Eric, last time.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Eric, you're muted. I'm not sure when you're calling on me.
Whoops, Tim?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
And I myself, so I, should I go back and re-hit the ones prior just to be safe so it's on record? Mark? Laurie?
Aye.
Jolene?
Aye.
And Christina?
Aye.
Once again, seven will pass.
Motion carries and further evidence that we do better when we're together.
Do.
Folks, have a good night. Good meeting. Thank you all very much.
Good night.
Good night.